Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the November 6th meeting of the East Hemphill Township Board of Supervisors. Tonight's meeting has been advertised to be held in person and online using Zoom, with login and call-in information posted on our website. The meeting will be conducted by the chairman, who will be assisted by an employee managing the Zoom site. Tonight's video and audio is being recorded, and Robert's rules will apply. To offer comment, you must be recognized by the chairman. For meeting participants on Zoom, please use the chat function to be recognized. Text your name and address to the moderator. Your request to speak will then be passed by staff to the chairman to be recognized. Once recognized by the chairman, unmute your microphone, and after speaking, please mute your microphone. East Hemphill Township Public Comment Rules will apply for all public comment. You must be a resident or a business owner in the township to speak. You must identify yourself by name and address before speaking and sign the guest log for meeting-minute purposes, or follow the chat procedure already discussed for Zoom attendance. Individual comment is limited to three minutes and must be about the agenda item being discussed, with the exception of public comment when non-agenda items can be addressed. No action will be taken on any non-agenda item of a non-emergency nature during the public comment period for non-agenda items. We will now move on to our first agenda item. Please join me for a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first agenda item for consideration this evening is our consent agenda. The Consent Agenda addresses the approval of routine and repetitive business matters that tend to need little or no review, discussion, or deliberation. Consent Agenda items are provided for all board members for review in advance of our meeting. Is there any comment on the Consent Agenda from the board?
None here.
Hearing none. Any comment on the Consent Agenda from the audience? Okay. Again, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve tonight's Consent Agenda.
Still moved.
Motion for Mr. Wigglesworth, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Russell. Motion from Mr. Wigglesworth, second from Mr. Russell. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero. Moving on to our action items. The first item up this evening is the McDonald's Restaurant Sketch Plan.
Evening, everyone. My name is Drew Manley with Lang and Engineering, here to present the McDonald's Sketch Plan tonight. Our intent is to ask for approval of the, or sorry, the waiver approval of the preliminary plan. If we have the plan, we can pull up.
And of course, for everybody's reference, this is where the McDonald's is now, on Centerville Road.
Correct. Yeah, I'll start with the location. It's along Centerville and Hemblen Road. Currently exists a McDonald's fast food restaurant today. They're planning to maintain that same use. They call this one of their rebuild sites. Their intent is to demo the building, the parking lot that's existing signage, and they're going to upgrade all of it with a new store in place, new driveway, or drive-through for efficiency purposes, new signage, parking, improvements to utilities, stormwater infrastructure, those kinds of things. So, one of the big things we are doing on this site is we're reducing impervious by quite a bit, I think it's about 1,000 or 2,000 square feet, which just overall helps stormwater efficiency. We're also adding a small rain garden along Hemblen Road that will help capture, control, and release it, and just reduce effects further downstream. We are maintaining the same access points as they exist today along Hemblen and Centerville, and we don't see any kind of increased traffic trips due to the new layout. Short and sweet. So, yeah, I would like to ask for approval of the preliminary sketch plan. We have already made steps to submit our final plans to the Township Engineer, to the Conservation District. We're reaching out to utility companies now, so everything's quite underway.
Any questions from the board?
Just to clarify, it's not necessarily approval of the sketch plan, but it's a waiver of preliminary plan.
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you. And your exit on the Centerville Road, that's just an exit, right? It won't be a left-hand turn into the restaurant?
You cannot exit onto Centerville Road there. That is a right-in only.
I thought I saw a, on the left side of the plan there.
Off of Centerville, you are coming in this way.
Coming into the restaurant.
Correct. That was a part of the redesign of the South Centerville Road project.
Yeah, my understanding, they made recent improvements along Centerville and Hemblen with that drive being an improvement. Also, they added sidewalk right along Hemblen as well. And we're actually going to be, this isn't our most up-to-date plan because we're working on it, we are going to add sidewalk onto our site to, you know, have more friendly pedestrian traffic to and from the store.
Okay. I mean, I actually have no issues with what you're trying to do here, but hard for me to envision going south on Centerville Road, crossing northbound traffic into the McDonald's?
It's not.
It's not?
No, you would have to get on Hemblen.
Got to get on Hemblen?
Correct.
Okay.
If you're going north on Centerville, you can make that right into the.
Okay, all right.
It was reconfigured at full movement, it's no longer there.
Right.
Okay.
As part of the project, as Centerville project.
Again, on the left of this design here, what is that? Where the cursor is?
This is Centerville Road over here.
Right.
This access is an in-only from Centerville Road into the site.
This plan view is a little zoomed in, so we aren't seeing the full extent of Centerville. In our plans, that we do have an altosurvey that does illustrate Centerville and Hemblen's intersection there.
All right, thank you.
And you're going to, this is just a sketch. You're fully going to design a plan, go through, plan approval, it's going to go before the Planning Commission. All of those things are going to still be done, just so everybody's aware.
Correct. We're actually already going through that. Right now, we already received comments from Township Engineer, actively addressing those now. Same deal with the Conservation District and the county planning, so we decided to get ahead of scheduling.
And just for the record, too, and for other past projects that are similar to this, we've always granted this waiver. Usually, the preliminary final plan, which is a two-step process, is usually reserved for residential and large developments where there's phases and complexity. This is a very routine redo of an existing site. It's not anything complex, and it doesn't relieve the applicant of actually complying with our regulations and all of our ordinances, but it does expedite the process.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from the audience?
Can you please use? Brad, I need you to use the mic. Thank you.
Wow. Mr. Bennett mentioned the southbound traffic coming and cutting across northbound. I mean, I see that all the time. People make the little swift turn in there. There's cones there now, but I don't know, is the entrance going to be designed so that people can't come in from southbound, or, you know, so that's particularly curved a certain way? Because right now, people will come down that southbound side and cut across there. I mean, you know, I see it occasionally when I'm driving there. So, just to mention that, just because you're not designing that way, people will use it that way.
I think the plan is probably to drive traffic to the Hemblen Road entrance. Right?
I'm looking. Yeah.
This is the existing survey, and if you zoom in a little bit now, you can see a clear picture of Centerville, Hemblen. We weren't planning to make any existing or improvements to that access that is in the right-of-way. That is, it's all brand-new. It was just. We're just simply tying into that on our site and just updating our, you know, our circulation, our parking spaces, along with the rest of the facilities.
So, I think it's important to remember that what we're discussing right now is just a formality. We're not getting into the engineering part of this. All of this stuff, they're going to have to do to our satisfaction and with our engineer. And I think you've made it loud and clear, you want to make sure that there's not cutoff through, people heading south able to cut in through there. So, they can address that. You've got that information. That's a concern, just so you know it. But, I mean, again, what we're talking about tonight is really just the waiver of the preliminary plan. So, it's up to them to produce a plan that we're happy with, and if they don't do it...
I think the other thing to take into account is we have a whole nother project going on right now with Centerville. I think there's a center median, concrete median going in there, but I'm not our position for it.
I'm not sure how far it goes down.
Right. So, this could all be a moot point, realistically.
Yeah, okay. Yeah. You guys have done this before, I'm sure you'll get it right.
Process a lot, and we'll work with the township. But this is safest and most efficient.
Okay, thank you. Anything else from the audience? Okay. All right, hearing none, I'll hear a motion to approve the waiver of preliminary plan requirements for the McDonald's Restaurant Rebuild Project Township File 2414.01, subject to all staff and engineering comments.
So moved.
Motion from Mr. Russell, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Brewbaker. Motion from Mr. Russell, second from Mr. Brewbaker. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes five-zero. Next up, we have D.H. Holdings Sketch Plan.
Evening. My name's Tom Madison with Demon Sons. We are in the exact same place that they are. We have a plan that we're preparing to move ahead with. We have a final plan submitted. We actually already have our first review from the engineer, and we're here tonight with a sketch plan and a waiver of preliminary plan. So, once the plan's up there, I can kind of walk them through. So, we were here, I'm going to say about five to six years ago, for an expansion, a fairly sizable reconstruction and expansion of this Melvin Weaver and Sons property on Lee Brook Road, if everybody knows where we are here. And what they'd like to do now is, there's two fairly significant warehouse buildings out there currently. They'd like to take down a small portion of the front warehouse and then construct a new addition that would join the two together. So, there'll be one new building when this is all finished and done. They would be able to put in additional loading docks in that expansion area, and then do some work around the rear of the site as well. And then out to the back, near the floodplain, there's a floodplain that runs along the southern, or I guess it'd be the western side of the property. They'd also like to install a truck garage that would be for the maintenance of their own fleet, have a wash bay and repair facility, and so forth. So, that's the intent of this project, is to get that warehouse built that's between the two buildings, and then the truck garage in the back. We do have a new stormwater facility going in, it's replacing the one that's there now. That's, again, that's already in the works, and we have our first review from David Miller on that already. They didn't have a lot of significant concerns. So, it's proceeding well, and like I said, we're here tonight to seek permission to waive the preliminary plan and move straight to a final plan.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions from the board?
None. No.
All right. Any questions from the audience? Again, it's another sketch plan, or preliminary plan, I should say. All right. With that, I'll hear a motion to approve the waiver of preliminary plan requirements for D.L. Holdings Edition Project Township File 24-15.01, subject to all staff and engineering comments.
So moved.
Motion from Mr.?
Johnson.
Johnson, yes. He's down there. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Wigglesworth. Motion from Mr. Johnson, second from Mr. Wigglesworth. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes five-zero. Thank you. Okay, next up, we have a couple of redevelopment authority agreements to review. Mrs. Schweitzer.
So, you have two projects, Direct Wire and Shriver Pediatrics, that received funding from the Redevelopment Authority through the state, and as a part of those requirements and to release the funds, the cooperative agreement needs to be signed by the township as well as a resolution authorized in that signature. There is no impact to the township, this is just procedural things that the state requires for their funding.
We're just sort of the caretaker.
Correct.
Okay.
Even once removed from the caretaker.
Right, exactly. And there's no financial liability here for the township in any way?
No.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions from the board?
I'll be abstaining due to a family member that works there.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from the audience? Okay, hearing none, I'll hear a motion to adopt Resolution 2024-17 and authorize signature on the cooperative agreement between Direct Wire, the Housing Development Authority, and the township for the purpose of protecting the state's funding in the project.
So moved.
Motion from Mr. Wigglesworth, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Brewbaker. Motion from Mr. Wigglesworth, second from Mr. Brewbaker. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes four-zero with one abstention. And next up, we have the same type of agreement for Shriver. Mrs. Schweitzer.
It's exactly the same project, or same procedure, different project, of course, same funding source.
So, again, all we're doing here is oversight, more than anything else. Okay? Any questions from the board? Hearing none. Any questions from the audience? All right, with that, I'll hear a motion to adopt Resolution 2024-18 and authorize signature on a cooperative agreement between Shriver Pediatric, the Housing and Development Authority, and the township for the purpose of protecting the state's funding in this project.
So moved.
Motion from Mr. Brewbaker, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Johnson. A motion from Mr. Brewbaker, a second from Mr. Johnson. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Abstained.
Motion passes four-zero with one abstention. Okay, and next up, we have some discussion concerning Church and Knoll Park, Hemphill Youth Association Agreement. Mrs. Schweitzer?
So, the first thing you have on your agenda is Item D, which is the Church and Knoll Park. We had adopted a master plan, probably a little over a year ago, that hasn't been acted on. The park is still vacant in terms of the acreage. But what we have in Item E is a request from HYA, Hemphill Youth Associates, to put in one baseball field. And there have been discussions with the Recreation Authority and the township regarding in creating a municipal maintenance facility on this site. So, given those two items, it would be appropriate to amend the master plan to reflect those two changes. What you see on the screen is kind of dual-purpose here. It does show the maintenance facility, and then the X marks the field that HYA would like to install. As part of that install process would be also an agreement that they would agree to maintain it, install it, install the access drive and parking facility at their cost.
And the maintenance shed would be used for?
Combination of township facility and recreation golf course facility.
We're going to have to move the maintenance shed from the front of the property.
Of the golf course?
Yeah.
Okay.
And so, then we'll bring it over here, and then the golf course will store their equipment here. The other advantage, I think, down the road, and nothing's been decided yet, having the equipment there makes it easy for the golf course to perhaps give us a hand with maintenance when any of the time comes.
The other thing I suggested, Tom, was that we asked the authority to also help contribute to the grant fee that we're going to be paying that would cover this cost, too. So, this would be rolled into the grant.
Well, this particular modification, the field itself, and that's all that's going to happen here.
Right.
They're going to, they have the money for that.
No, I'm not talking about HYA, but when we go apply for the grant, we're going to roll the shed, the maintenance facility, into the grant application. We talked about having the authority also contribute to the finder fee that we have to pay the grant applicant, so. So, this is kind of a win-win for us to bring this in. It helps the authority out with their cost of relocating the shed, and we get some financial assistance with the grant application fee.
Anything else on the board?
We're only on D right now, right? Or are we also talking about E?
They're kind of connected, but you really should update your master plan, which would be the maintenance facility, and that's it. Just the maintenance facility, because everything else is already on the plan.
And really, what we're trying to do here is be transparent with everyone, let everybody know what's happening and why it's happening, and give you some background on it.
Yep, and I just want to mention, we had several meetings with the Parks and Recreation Subcommittee on this that Tom and I are on, met with HYA, and we've been talking about this several meetings, and I'm very happy with how it's progressing here.
And just to give you some context, what was proposed in that area was basically...
Hard court?
Yeah, hard court surfacing.
Surfaces, tennis courts.
No definition for it, just...
Spickleball courts.
Right.
Which could be relocated, you know, somewhere else.
Correct.
As we've said all along, this is going to change and modify as time goes on.
Do we have any idea what the timeline would be, might be?
Well...
I mean, I do, is it, this would hinge on grants, or this is, this first section, this first work would just be HYA?
Yeah. We're just talking about a baseball field right now. They're going to put in a baseball field.
And what might be the timing that they're...
They're looking...
Planning to do that.
They can do it in four weeks.
They already have funding.
And they already have funds.
Right, okay. In that area, I think that's still sod in that area, too, so they really have a good field already.
Yes.
Hopefully.
They just have to put some diamond text dirt down for a pitcher's mound.
And fencing, yes.
And infield, and then they got everything, if they do fencing. It depends what HYA does.
I think in our discussion, Jay indicated that they will do fencing, and, you know, this will just be the, this will be a very simple baseball diamond. It's not going to be a finished product, close to, I think, what we're going to have when we start developing more fields. It just gives us a start. They need a field, they need some fields. We have this available, so we're going to try to work with them. Okay?
Yeah, and it's already been stated, but I just want to restate that HYA did receive the funding for developing baseball fields and, you know, would like to use this location for that, and that's what the X is. So, it's the first field. To restate what was already said.
Just as an FYI, they are going to put an additional field up in...
Farm deal.
Farm deal, right. So, moving ahead.
Yeah, and I was very impressed with HYA being able to get funding to do projects like this. You know, when I sat in the audience last year and talking about this project, and they said, you know, they would be funding, and I thought, well, that's interesting, that will be challenging, but they were able to do it, and that's, I was very impressed with that.
Anything additional from the board? Anything from the audience?
Go ahead, grab the other one. Patty Clark, 3337 Cochran Drive. It's, in terms of HYA funding the field, on one hand, that's, you know, positive that they've been able to raise the money, the money to do that. On the other hand, I guess I'm thinking about the discussions when the plan was developed and conversations about that the park is for everyone's use, not just like the residents that live right around there, but it was important to develop the park for everyone in the township to use. So, I guess I would have a concern about, would there be any expectation since HYA is funding the field? Is it for their exclusive use, or would it be open to anybody in the township to use the field? And, you know, would that have to be made clear with HYA that even though they're funding it, that other residents would also be able to use it?
Other residents will be able to use it. Obviously, because they are funding it and building it, when they need the field, they'd like to be able to reserve the field and use the field when they need it. So, there might be some limitation for perhaps a group, but for the most part, it will be open access for anyone in the township.
Okay, so that would, I mean, that would be a concern for me, just in terms of them, you know, kind of having first choice of the field. And especially like as time goes on, it's kind of, it would be kind of viewed as their field, you know, them getting like top priority for using it. And I know that they were the organization that initially approached the township in terms of, you know, having more baseball fields, but that, again, I'm tying it back to the concept of the park being for everyone's use, and like one organization not kind of having priority over others that might want to use it.
Are you talking about the baseball field or the whole field?
Yeah.
Just the baseball field?
Yeah.
I mean, there is some benefit, there would be, the agreement is written that they would have preferential use of the field, but they don't use it all the time. The positive for the residents of the township is they are going to install the access drive and also provide parking, because right now, that piece of ground is very difficult to use unless you are within walking distance. So, that will be a plus for the township, that there'll be about 25 parking spaces in there, in stone, but temporary, but they would be there.
Mm-hmm, okay.
I mean, I don't think it's any different than we have here at AHR Park. We have youth soccer out front. You know, if somebody wants to play frisbee, it doesn't make sense for them to be playing frisbee while the soccer game's going on, right? So...
Yeah, but is that, I mean, are there organizations that, I mean, get the, if they want to reserve the field, are there certain organizations that have first right to reserve the field when they want to, or could any organization or any group in the township reserve the field for them to use?
Any group in the township would be able to reserve the field, but again, HYA during baseball season would have a preference, preferential treatment for some times of the other day. That's part of the deal. Township gets a free baseball field for all residents, as you say, and they get a place to play.
Okay.
Yes, and I'm looking at the agreement right now, there is a provision for that. East Hemphill Township may schedule other entities or per... other entities or persons to use the existing or proposed baseball fields during times they have not been requested for reservation by H Y A. So it is, there's a four-page agreement here with a lot of those kinds of things in it that I, I read through and it looked good.
I'm just expressing a concern that it does, it, it does kind of set aside, you know, the, the preferential, I, I understand that they're funding it, but at the same time, kind of, you know, for however length of time, you know, in perpetuity, it's, it's kind of their, their field in a sense as far as them having, uh, preference for scheduling it when they, they would like it. So it's just a, it's just a concern. I'm thinking, you know, in the future, would there be other parts of the park that would be kind of under similar type arrangements? I don't know if that, if they would or not.
We're, we're looking for any other organizations in the, in the township to step up and, and, uh, fund portions of things that we're gonna be doing in the park. And when we get to that point, we'll have the same type of oversight and, and agreements in place for them also. But at the end of the day, the agree, the, any agreement is gonna need to address their need.
And we do that with other groups, we do that with pickleball, bocce ball, volleyball, groups have agreements, they reserve the fields for certain times for farm employing, stuff like that, that's, we do that pretty much with every group at this point. We're not, not favorite one group, but we also do, do reservations for our fields.
As of right now, there is no other group that requests use of our baseball fields across the township other than H Y A. And anytime there's an event that requests the use of the baseball field, H Y A works very well with us to be flexible with the scheduling.
And, and I had a son that used to play baseball and we would go on fields when it wasn't being used and we would practice and stuff like that. It was never an issue.
Okay. Yeah, I think when I had heard a couple of meetings ago about the, um, the approval to move forward with, um, the, the, um, organization that was the grant writing agency that was gonna be seeking grant funding, I was kind of pleased to hear that because I felt like it was kind of neutral, neutral funding or funding that was coming from grant funding that would, so it kind of makes the whole park nu, neutral in the sense that it's, it belongs to everybody and there's no part of it that is kind of tied to a certain organization. So I liked that idea that, that that was the approach that the township was taking.
Would you suggest we wouldn't have any agreement with H Y A?
I mean, if we could get, if the township can get grant funding, otherwise, I would say go with, go with that path rather than having a single organization fund something.
Okay. Thank you for your comments.
I think I might also add, you know, just thinking through the, this conversation, if we would wait to get a grant, it's certainly a long process, can be a long process for that to go through and for that to happen. Would, there wouldn't even be an opportunity to play on a field out there if H Y A wouldn't put it out there. So next spring, there would be no field there for anybody to play on if they wouldn't be putting it out there, so. Yeah, it would seem like a, a pretty good, a pretty good setup, and I think the, the driveway is a big plus, as, as was mentioned. It, uh, certainly gives access to that, to that area from people that don't just live across the street. Um, I think that's good.
Okay.
Good plan, a good, good, uh, good use of, you know, uh, working together with other, with other entities to get something done.
And, and I, I'd like to
Go ahead, Bob.
Add, I mean, I, I like the concept of leagues getting involved because when you have a league, you have a schedule and people show up and, you know, you, it can't be, oh, someone else has the field, you know, that kind of thing, so. I don't, I'm, I'm appreciative of H Y A being willing to schedule leagues and organize a whole league. And that, to me, somewhat requires that they have, you know, the right to use the fields.
Yeah, I'm appreciative of what you guys have done and the work you put into it and I think we've said all along, it was gonna be a step-by-step process and it was gonna be many steps and it would be a long time until this fully got developed and, you know, here we are and this is really step one. Right, actually.
Small step, small step. For, right, right now.
So, um,
Good.
It, it looks good to me.
Sounds good. All right, will we need to take any action on a new modifying the plan with the, with the building on it?
Yes, just to put a marker on your.
Okay, just to put a marker.
Uh, I believe there is a, a Zoom comment as well.
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Mister Chairman, Mister LaFever has indicated that his, expectation is that underground utilities and site drainage for the total park area must be designed before a partial development and that site drainage for the site is critical.
Okay. Does he want to speak?
He did not indicate so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Megan Connell, eleven fifty-seven Old Eagle Road. I'm sorry, I just can't tell which is the maintenance, like what.
Building?
Yeah.
Right here, building? You can't see my cursor.
The, the brown rectangular piece there next to the white.
Okay. And what is the white, I, I'm?
Parking area, from equipment.
Okay, and what sort of equipment? It's, because you're moving it from the baseball field, I mean, the golf course area.
Mowing.
Mowing.
Big humongous, multi-bike mowers.
All right, thank you.
Did you thank Mister Weaver for his comment?
Mister LaFever.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mister LaFever. Okay. All right, so at this point, we'll need a, a motion to update. There we go, motion to update the Church and Knoll Park Master Plan as reflected in the plan dated ten sixteen, two thousand twenty-four revised, which reflects the addition of a municipal services facility on the site.
So moved.
Motion from Mister Johnson, wait here a second.
Second.
Second from Mister Russell. Motion from Mister Johnson, a second from Mister Russell. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes five zero. Again, on the Church and Knoll Park, Hemfield Youth Association Agreement.
Mister Chairman.
Mm-hmm.
My apologies, before you continue, Mister LaFever has indicated he wishes to speak.
Okay.
Can you hear me, please?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, additionally, I must point out, in my tenure at East Hemfield, we would never have approved a major project, a project of this magnitude without a complete site development plan. We would not do that. I cannot understand that you gentlemen do not understand. And from my experience, I am asserting again, you must develop these things on a total site basis if you want to add to them piece by piece. Once you have a plan with those utilities and those necessary, this site is very critical for watershed. That's been proven by a wet spot in the middle of it and the use by the sod firm over the years. You are approaching this in a manner that I believe is in error. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Is there anything that we want to review in the agreement with H Y A before we, I call for a motion?
On the agreement?
Yeah, on the agreement itself.
Uh, they received a copy of it, I didn't hear anything from Mister Enoch.
Okay.
Doesn't necessarily need to have any action, but they can't move forward until they have that agreement in place.
Okay, so, well, let's do this, let's, let's, um, I'll hear a motion authorized signature on the agreement when we get it, that allows H Y A to install one ball field on the Church Knoll Park property and responsibilities regarding construction and maintenance.
So moved.
Motion from Mister Johnson, now here a second.
Second.
Second from Mister Wigglesworth. Motion from Mister Johnson, second from Mister Wigglesworth. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes five zero. Okay, next up, we have more discussion on our two thousand twenty-five draft budget. Let's start, Mrs. White, or anything?
I will turn it over to the treasurer. Uh, she has to, she can fill you in as to what has changed on the information that you have before you.
I'll, I'll start with the general fund. Uh, we are looking now at a deficit of nine hundred and twelve thousand, six hundred and ninety-three dollars. There has been three relatively significant changes. Um, the first one is on page six, line one twenty. The account would be oh one, four oh two, four three, seven, five, and that is the financial software for the accounting, or the finance department. There is a hosting fee that was not initially included in, in the budgeted amount. Um, that change would be an increase of nine thousand five hundred and fifty-three dollars.
Again, what, what line was that?
Page six, line one twenty.
Computer technology?
Yep.
And that increased?
It increased from, I believe it was fourteen thousand, it's, it went up about ten thousand because of the hosting fee that was not included initially.
Okay, thank you.
And then the second change was discussed at the budget meeting. Um, it is on page seven, line one forty-nine. That is the addition, the ten thousand dollar addition of the urban S D K that was discussed and agreed upon at the budget meeting. And that is also in the computer software for the police department.
But that was taken out, it looks like.
It was, it was initially taken out and then it was put back in.
Yeah, that's the one that actually saves money.
Yeah, but I don't see it here. One forty-nine, right?
Line one forty-nine, the account number is zero one, four, ten, forty-three, seventy-five.
Yeah, okay, I got it. Uh, thank you.
And then it was in, in the initial budget, at the budget meeting, it was eighty-three thousand and we increased that to ninety-three thousand to include the ten thousand for the urban S D K.
Okay.
The other change that was made is we received an updated, um, proposal for our workers' compensation insurance, and because we have a certified safety committee, we receive a discount of eleven thousand, nine hundred and thirty-eight dollars. Um, I don't have a line number because that, it was, it turns out to be a five percent discount and that was split proportionally between all of the departments throughout the, throughout the township. So those are the three main changes, or three only changes that were made to the general fund.
Good job on the safety program, which provides that five percent discount for us, right?
We have a, we've, they've got a certified safety committee.
Safety committee, okay. Awesome. Okay. Anything additional?
Um, nope, the only, only changes in the general fund were those three changes.
Okay. We want to talk about the general, or you want to wait till the end?
Well, whenever, if everybody else has any adds.
Okay. All right, uh, well, let's, let's stay with the general fund. Anyone that wants, uh, to discuss anything that's on here, they want to make any adds or subtractions, uh, or provide any comment. And we've, we've kicked this around for a month and a half.
Well, I'll, I'll, I'll add one. Um, so I do want to make a consideration, uh, for this. Item is on, uh, sheet five, page five of the general fund. It's in our contributions to libraries. Want to explore, uh, and discuss this a, a little bit here. Um, we in the township do not have a actual library in our township. Um, in past years, we would fund one of three libraries. We have three libraries that are all equidistant. From the center of the township, we have Manheim Community Library to our north. We have Mountville Library to our south, and we have Mount Joy's Library, uh, to our west. And from a center of mass perspective, within a mile or so, they're all the same distance to the township. Um, in the past, we contributed to the City of Lancaster Library system, which was because of the Mountville Library and their, and the Mountville Library being part of the City of Lancaster system. We did, um, suspend our funding, uh, at the beginning of, um, or the spring of this year, uh, for that library, uh, and we've discussed in the past the reasons why. Because of the, the majority of the board felt that the city library was engaging in political activity. Um, I do think that we should be making a contribution in twenty twenty-five to our libraries. Um, I still stand by our decision with the City of Lancaster Library, um, because I don't think they've addressed the political issue, at least to my satisfaction. So I'd like to suggest is that we do restore library funding in our twenty twenty-five budget. Um, and we do recognize that we do have two other libraries that do not engage in political activity. And I'd like to make contributions to those two libraries instead. Um, I also recognize that we have our budget issues, uh, right now. In the past, we would contribute approximately twenty thousand dollars to the library in our twenty twenty-four budget. We bumped that up to twenty-six thousand, seven hundred, and I would propose that we back that down, uh, back down to the twenty thousand dollar level. And that we put, uh, tag a donation of ten thousand dollars to the Mount Joy Library and tag a donation to the Manheim Community Library of ten thousand dollars. Um, so that's, that is my suggestions. Uh, that we do some sort of a library funding restart at this point. Uh, we're certainly not against funding libraries at this point, so I just wanted to throw that out there to, uh, for consideration. I know, uh, a number of people that utilize the other two libraries, so my wife being one that utilizes the Mount Joy Library a lot, and a lot of the residents in the northern part of the township do use Manheim Community Library. And they are actually engaging in a, in building a brand-new library. It's gonna be a really nice state-of-the-art library, um, in Pleasantview communities that they're putting in that is gonna be one of the nicest libraries in the county. Uh, so, um, the residents in the northern part of our township are gonna have a really nice facility to utilize for library services in the future. So I'm just throwing it out there for consideration and discussion.
Oh. Yeah, if I may comment on that, I would not support, um, funding any libraries other than Mountville. I know it's not physically in East Hemfield Township, but I think it's viewed, at least by me and people I've spoken to, as, uh, you know, it's in, it's within the Hemfield School District and I view that as our library, so I would, um, you know, I would support if we are going to donate to any library, I, uh, prefer it to be, um, more than prefer it to be Mountville. That's really the only library I'd like to support.
Uh, I think, um, Mister Johnson, I appreciate your, yeah, uh, position on that, certainly. Uh, I guess I'm, uh, I'm just not sure, and I've been thinking of many different ways that it could be done, and I'm not sure how uh, we could, um, be, because of the way the, the Mountville Library is structured with the Lancaster Library as a, as a uh, branch of the Lancaster Library, I'm not sure how we could possibly give money to the Mountville Library without giving it to the Lancaster Library. And I, I don't feel, I mean, unless the Lancaster Library can, uh, I mean, I read through the, the paperwork, the letter that they had sent and, and, um, a couple of weeks ago. Um, it, it doesn't make any sense to me how a, any, to me, any donation to the Lancaster Library that's, that they say is funneled to the Mountville Library reduces the, the budget amount that the Lancaster Library would be giving to the Mountville Library, so in essence, we are giving it to the Lancaster Library. There, we're, we're giving them room in their budget to use that money that we're donating for whatever the Lancaster Library so chooses to use it for. So, I, you know, they can, they can say on paper that they're, they're moving our donation to the Mountville Library, and that may be well true, but again, it, that creates a, you know, an opportunity in their budget that they don't have to fund that much. That, they, if, unless, if you understand what I'm saying. So because of that, I think it's very, very difficult in my mind to, to fund the Mountville Library. And, and Mountville Library, just so everyone understands, that's a totally And, and Mountville Library, just so everyone understands, that's a totally different entity setup than what the libraries that you're talking about, Mountjoy and, and Manheim are independent entities that are not of branches of the Lancaster Library. And because of that, you know, that's, that's how, I mean, I, I, I could, I, I think we, we should support community libraries in our area. And I, and I don't disagree that Mountville is in our school district, and that would seem to be the, the, the prime target of what we should be paying attention to. But I don't know how, I, I don't see how we could possibly do that. Considering, you know, the past situation that we've been dealing with.
Just, yeah, one point to that. I mean, what you're saying is you can look at it that way. There are such things as earmarks, you know, corporations, money goes into a corporation, they earmark it to different sections. So to me, that, if we requested, the Lancaster Library would earmark it towards Mountville. So it's just how you want to look at it. And, you know, I'd like to look at it to continue to support the Mountville Library, as I've stated here many times.
So I guess, is there any?
Yeah.
Okay. This has, you know, become a contentious issue, obviously. I think Mr. Brubaker really makes a great point. Unfortunately, it would, there would not be any issue whatsoever if Mountville were an independent library. We would have nothing to say on this matter, period. This is in response to Drag Queen Story Hour put on by Lancaster City Library. We cannot fund Mountville without the money going through Lancaster City Library, and that's an important part. You can say it's an earmark, it's designated, but our bu, our money to Mountville, we don't set their budget. We have no representation. Their board is the Lancaster City Board. They make all the decisions, they make all the funding decisions. They're responsible for the funding of Mountville Library. We had had several meetings, discussions with staff from the library since all this occurred. We even extended them an offer to make Mountville, which to me seems to be the most practical solution here. Make Mountville an independent library with its own independent board. There would be no issue at that point. Money can go directly to them. For whatever reason, the city did not want to go along with that suggestion, and that's their right, that they're nonprofit, they're independent, they, they don't have to. In addition, we made clear to them at, at our meeting back in the spring, you know, if we were going to continue funding through the Lancaster City Library, what we expected. I have a lot of respect for John Hindley. I read that letter. I think he is a bright spot for Lancaster Library. That letter did not seem to me to be written in his voice. It does not address one of the things at all that we requested from them. We are offered no assurance. There's no policies in place, in fact, just the opposite. If you read their policies, read the groups that they reference. I mean, it's clear that this type of event or other controversial events will happen again there. I think it's also important that we all recognize East Hempfield Township does not partner or make many donations outside of our organization, outside of our mandate. The libraries are a state and county function. They are discretionary spending. When you look at what we do donate to that are nonprofits, we donate to fire departments. We donate to the Amos Herr Foundation, which we partner with, and we donate to the Hempfield Area Rec Commission. All of those entities are non-controversial. We're not in the middle of Drag Queen Story Hour with any of those groups. We're not in the middle of any kind of controversial events. So when we're spending taxpayer money, I think it's important that we don't entangle ourselves or end up in the same situation that we were before. And sadly, nothing's been done to ensure us that that will not happen again. So with that, I cannot in any way support a donation to Lancaster City Library. I could perhaps go along with what Mr. Russell has suggested. But for me, I'm, I'm, I'm a no on making a donation to Lancaster City Library.
Yeah, and what I'm, what I'm proposing is for the 2025 budgets. I think we were pretty clear with the 2024 that we were suspending the funding until they developed a policy to our satisfaction, that they were going to develop a policy of political neutrality, which I don't think I agree with what Mr. Brubaker and what Mr. Wigglesworth said. What they sent to us a couple of weeks ago was not that, in fact, it was the exact opposite. They took away their guidelines that were in place that actually were politically neutral and basically replaced them with just a discretion of their board, which is in no ways the guarantee that we are looking for, for when we made our decision to suspend funding until they developed a policy of neutrality. So I do have this on here as a suggestion for us to add to the 2025 budget. This is not talking about the 2024 funding that was suspended with our action in, like, last, late spring of this year. And it would take a, a separate action to restart that funding. This is really looking forward from, into next year's budget, which is actually a line item and that I, and we can discuss tonight.
Right, misunderstood, thank you. I, I'd like to say a couple of things. One of the, one of the reasons that we suspended funding from the library this year.
Mr. Bennett, can you pull your mic closer?
Yes. One, one of the, one of the main reasons that we suspended funding to the library this year was because we had no control over how, how the money was spent, and it was being spent in a way that was not appropriate. We all agree that what they did wasn't appropriate, wasn't in our view, in the best interest of our, our residents. And that's why we took the action that we did. My, my concern now is that we're taking our residents taxpayers' taxes and money and, and, and supporting an organization in another municipality, again, where we have no control really over how the money's used and when it's used. On top of that, we have, we have a budget deficit of almost a million dollars. And I think at a minimum, we could be putting the money there. We also, to your point, we also have some great organizations in the township that would benefit from additional funding. I'm not against the libraries. Personally, I like to, I like to find a way to develop an accommodation with the Lancaster group and in, in essence, work to, to do some funding for Mountville. I think we can find a way to do that. I think that the, that the letter, I know, I know you guys don't agree, but I, I think the letter from John was at a minimum, a good faith attempt on his part to give us what we asked for. We asked for two things. A guarantee that there would not be a future Drag Queen event at the library and that they would stay apolitical. That is in the letter, okay? In addition to that, he gave us an assurance that we could have a representative on the library board and one or two other accommodations that he was, that they were willing to make. Again, I agree, perhaps not enough, but it's a start. And I think there are some benefits for everyone for us to try to find a way to see that our relationship with the library continues. So for me, I'm not on board with providing funding for a library in another municipality. That's at least, at least right now. I'd also like to find a way to get the 2024 issue resolved, get that out of the way also.
For the record, Mountville is in another municipality too.
I, I understand that.
All, all three libraries are in another municipality. We don't have a East Hempfield Library at this point.
You know, and I, and I guess, and I guess I would say, given everything that's gone on here, I think this, one of the, one of the things that's happened here is that we've, I'm not saying we've lost our focus on what our, what our job is here, but I think this Drag Queen thing has, has distracted us from what we're really, our, our real mission for the community and the township. And I'd like to, you know, I'd like to sort of find a way to resolve that.
Tom, I, I just, one thing I would say is the representative that they offered on the board was not a representative. It's a, a representative spot that meets their approval. We don't get to pick who we want and, and have that person serve on the board. That person goes through their board to see if they meet their approval. That's, they've offered us nothing in this latter.
Any, any board of directors selects their members, okay? They, they choose their members, whether they're in or not. There, that recommendations are made and they, they wind up choo, choosing them. It would be this, it would be the same process here. The other side, the other side of it also is, and I'm, and I'm not even sure, I want to continue down the track with library funding at all. But having said that, you know, I just think that it's taking up too much of our attention and, and.
It is a small part of our budget, and I can't, I can't believe I'm the one arguing this, but it is a small part of our budget at this point compared to the bigger parts. Most municipalities do not have a library in their jurisdiction. They support the libraries that abut their municipality. And that's actually pretty common. One that immediately pops to mind is East Lampier, but there's others that do that too, that support multiple miss, multiple libraries. We have three, all three of them are the same distance. I'm suggesting that we do at least restore back to our 2022 funny, twenty thousand dollars and that we contribute to two of the libraries that immediately abut us. Should the City of Lancaster adopt a, a true apolitical policy in the future, I'd be glad to divide that up into thirds at this point. But I think we should be funding our libraries and continuing the funding going forward into 2025. As there's a number of residents that utilize the library system and utilize the Lancaster Library system, which is all the libraries, not just the City of Lancaster. Like example I gave you, I, I do know people that utilize the Manheim Community Library based off where they live. And there's a number of people that utilize the Mountjoy Library based off of where they live. And obviously, there's a number of people that use, use the Mountville Library based off where they live. But everybody's got a library card, and I think we should still be making contributions to our library system. And this is my way of, of contributing to the library without violating the principle that I personally have established for local government about our entities that we engage with staying apolitical. This is my political compromise that I'm proposing. Yeah, in addition to what Tom had said about John Hindley's letter, you could view that however you wanted to, but what John Hindley had stated about the reason he can't, cannot promise never having a Drag Queen Story Hour is the same reason we can't promise what our board's going to do 10 years from now. People are going to come and go. You know, John had said he would not have a, they would not be planning to have a Drag Queen Story Hour while it was still unsafe in the foreseeable future. But he cannot promise that it would never happen because the board could change and people could change and a lot of things could change. So in my view, you know, as Tom said, there was an attempt to provide a lot of give and take. And, you know, and the point about the, having someone on their board, it could be contingent upon, you know, when, when, to me, that was valuable as, you know, if they did not accept the person on our board, then they would not get the funding, you know, that kind of thing. So it's, to me, that was something that they had offered, and that could be valuable. So we would have input. So.
I would, go ahead.
So just, just, I guess, given some of our different views here, would the, how would the board feel? Or would the board be more comfortable or could we agree to put, to put, say, the twenty thousand that was suggested into their, we don't have to ear, just, the, the line item is contributions to libraries. It's not contributions to specific libraries, it's contributions to libraries. We would have time, we, we have more time then to, to see how this works out, make some decisions. We're, we're, we're looking at some budget challenges for next year anyway. We've got a line item in there for it. It's a discretionary contribution. We, that would give us the opportunity, i- if, if, you know, the budget is, is tighter than we expect next year. You know, maybe we don't make a contribution, maybe that's just the fiscal, you know, the proper budgetary thing, you know, expense thing to do is to not, w- w- we don't know that at this point. But I, I don't have a problem with putting twenty thousand dollars in there and, and not earmarking it for anything, any library in particular, because that also leaves us, you know, leaves us some time to, who knows, maybe there will be a way that comes along that we can fund the Mountville Library in the meantime. Well, I don't, I don't, I think we're, we're sort of putting ourselves in a corner if we, you know, designate it specifically now. As I'm, as, you know, I'm thinking of this as I'm listening to our conversations here. Why would, why not just put it in there as a, as a line item for contributions to library? Would that be more comfortable for everyone?
Yeah.
For me, for me, I, I, I can't support funding a library outside of our jurisdiction with the, with the exception of the Mountville Library, which we've always been, you know, had access to and where, where the bulk of our residents go for their library services.
I mean, I, at this point, I think we go back to the decision and the resolution we passed. We asked for specific things. To me, that this letter is, is not it. When we go back and we looked at, and look and listen to what was said to us when they were here, there was never an acknowledgement publicly that anything was wrong with the program, crack, programming. In fact, they insisted it was appropriate, it's done all over the country. There's, there's a fundamental disagreement, and when it comes to spending tax dollars, I just don't know how we can get wind, wound up with them. If there's a way to make Mountville somehow independent with an independent board that is going to be different, that, that's one thing. Secondly, we had never requested that they give us a guarantee forever and ever. I think that's added language that's been put on to, on their side of the argument. I simply want somebody to come and tell me that this is not going to happen on my watch. I'm fine with that. We have not gotten that assurance. And again, if you go back and actually read the policies that they've updated, they're not changed for the better to stop stuff like this from happening again. So for me, until something changes, I'm a flat-out no on any donation to Lancaster City Library. And I might have, it sounds like we all have various opinions and different degrees of it. I could go along with what Scott suggested, I could go along with what Roger suggested, but I'm a no for the money currently going to Lancaster City Library. That's just where I'm at. for the money currently going to Lancaster City Library. That's just where I'm at.
Yeah. The reason I made my motion was to support our motion in the spring, which in the spring, we made very clear that until they adopted an apolitical position, we were not going to support them with funding. And I, I would still stand by my original suggestion of the $20,000. Obviously, we can make a change should they develop a policy next year, but I think we just get this error with, we designate the monies, we can tweak it next year if we needed to. That'd be my, my position, so.
And since I don't think we're going to come to an agreement tonight, I like Roger's proposal only because I don't want to not vote for the budget only because we haven't decided exactly how we're going to spend this 20,000 yet. You know, I don't think I'll ever support any library funding other than Mountville, but if we can move forward tonight with Roger's proposal, you know, I would vote for that. No, we're just kicking the can down the road, but I think we have a lot of other things to talk about tonight. Budget wise.
I would also support Roger's proposal if we come to an agreement that the $20,000 would, would only be used for, for Mountville capital expenditures. That's brick and mortar, computers that are installed at that location.
So currently until I see something different from Lancaster City Library, I'm a no. That's just where I'm at.
And I would be yes on what Tom suggested.
And that would be enough. That's why I was proposing this compromise. At least continue library funding.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't understand what the difference between capital expenditures and operational, the, the capital, the capital budget comes out of the Lancaster Library capital reserve as well.
Capital expenditure is something that we could pay for. They, they give us an invoice. They buy five computers. They give us an invoice and we pay it. That way we know that our money goes there. Not downtown.
But it's allowing them to take money that they would have spent there and putting it downtown. Our donation does not increase their overall budget one way or another. That's set by Lancaster City Library, just like we set a budget for our police department, our fire department. Somebody comes in and says, I want to contribute to the fire department. They've contributed to our overall budget. We just take that money. Their, their budget doesn't go up. We just take that money and spend it elsewhere.
And we've been, and we've been full of just giving them their, their money, letting them spend it where, and do whatever they want with it. And not, and not, and not building up the Mountville Library. I think anyone that's gone in there can see that it, you know, needs a little bit of help.
We had offered them the ability to spin the library off into a separate board and they turned that down at this point where would have separated the monies between the city of Lancaster and Mountville. They made those decisions. They made the decisions not to honor our request of developing a true policy of staying politically neutral on issues well beyond anything about drag queen. In, in fact, they took away their policies that were actually pretty good. They just weren't enforcing them and replaced them with the discretion of the board, which is absolutely the exact opposite of a guarantee. I mean, if our, one of our fire companies started engaging in political activities, we would be having the same discussions with them too. If they were starting to do some things that were causing division within the community.
I don't, I don't see at the discretion of the board anywhere in this document that they sent us.
The, well, they reference their policies, Tom. The letter, it refers you to their policies. If you go to their policy online, that's where you find all that information.
I have those policies right here. And it all deals with, and again, I don't see anything at, at being at the board's discretion.
Say they reference their mission, that statement and their vision statement, and that's what they're going to drive by. And that's all interpretational.
Well, yes, and it's, what's apolitical and what's not isn't, is, you, you might interpret it one way. I might interpret it another way. Scott might interpret it another way.
Guys, drag queen story, I mean, it's not appropriate. Taxpayer dollar shouldn't be going to it.
Right, and I, right, it should not be. They know they messed up in, in the, in the letter.
I, I did not find that in the letter. If you can read it to me, I'd be grateful.
Finally, I want to express our appreciation for the constructive feedback that we received from East Hemphill Township and other local government partners over the past month. It was evident to us that the Lancaster Public Library had important work to do in updating our policies and sharing them with, more effectively with our community so that we operate with greater transparency and enhanced communication. This has been a very important outcome of various conversations, including those we've had with East Hemphill Township supervisors, and we are grateful. I understand there are some lingering concerns. I don't want to read this whole letter, this. But, but again, because we're talking about, I guess, we can make it available to anybody that wants to read it. But, but, but again, I, I don't disagree. It may not be all that you want or all that Scott wants or all that Roger wants. But at least it's, it's an attempt and it's, and we should be working with them to, to get things to where we want them to be. That's all.
I guess my frustration is we, we tried to go down the road to work with them for, it's been six, seven months now.
I, you know.
It's frustrating that we, this is what we got at the, at the end result.
At the, at, at the end, okay, I, I, I don't, I don't disagree. I wasn't part of the discussion or negotiation on the taking over the library with the other municipalities. But again, at the end of the day, the other municipalities moved away from it for whatever reason and and, and, and made their contributions to the library.
Well, it couldn't happen without the Lancaster City Library's assistance. Lancaster City Library flat out said no. That's what happened.
Okay. Yeah. Well, I would understand them saying no. It's, you know, it's like, wow. Bad comparison, but giving up one of your children. I mean, they've been nurturing that library for a lot of years and just to give it away, you know, or shed it, just for the purpose, just for this reason seems a real tail wagging the dog, dog kind of thing. So I fully understand them not wanting to give up their library. And I don't think East Hemphill Township wants to be in a library management business either. So I, I applaud them for their decision not to, you know, sacrifice the Mountville Library over this.
Okay. Well, look, we've had a great discussion about this and I appreciate everybody's comments. At this point, I will hear a motion to move forward.
Okay, I'll make that motion. I'll make a motion that we add $20,000 to line item number 103 of the general fund with $10,000 targeted to the Mount Joy Library and $10,000 targeted to Manheim Community Library.
I have a motion from Mr. Russell. Do I hear a second?
Second.
I have a second from Mr. Wigglesworth. Any discussion, additional discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
So what you have before you is a draft budget. It has not been adopted as a proposed budget. It's not necessary to make a motion to add something to this budget, but I understand your discussion that you've had. The discretionary funds that you're talking about, the contributions are not distributed until the board supervisor says move forward. If you do this motion, is there stipulation that you still need that discussion beforehand? Or that we will advise Manheim and Mount Joy that they are getting $10,000?
My motion is for this to be an action item, just like it'd be for any other budget. And that's why I wanted a formal motion and add this into the budget tonight.
Understood.
Okay. Any additional discussion from the board? Anything from the audience? Okay. Calling for the vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those voting nay?
Nay.
Nay. Motion fails, 3-0?
Two to, two to three.
I'm sorry, 3-2, yes. So we will not be adding this as an action item. Okay, let's move on.
So are we done with this then, or is this?
Well, we're done with, we're done with library.
Well, are we putting anything in the line item or not putting anything in the line item? I think that's the question.
That's what I want. I like, I'd like to be done with it completely. If we just voted no, I, I don't need to vote, donate to anybody. I'd like it to be resolved.
You voted no, right?
I voted no.
Okay.
Are, are we, that's what I'm.
We're done with it.
Okay, so there's going to be no donation to any.
There's going to be no donation to any library.
Okay, very good.
Well, I'd like to make a motion to donate $20,000 to the Mountville Library as part of the budget for 2025.
There is no Mountville Library.
Or the Lancaster Library, Mountville branch, the way Tom described it as a, a capital expenditure.
I have a motion for Mr. Johnson. Do I hear a second? Hearing none, we'll put that aside for now.
All right. So if there's no further questions on the general fund, we can move to the trash fund?
Yes. Let's talk about trash.
I do have an adjustment to make on the actual budget, the trash recycling budget. This does not reflect what is requested as a $370 yearly payment. The budget did not get updated. It is still listing at the 410. I do apologize for that. I made the change and it, I apparently didn't save it. So line five, account number 064263641 should be adjusted for
What page was that again?
That is, the trash budget is only one page.
Oh, so it's part of the?
It's the actual, the main budget. The number that's in there is the 410 that was initially discussed at the budget meeting.
So we found a way to move that down to 370, is it?
Yes. 370 is what, is what we're recommending.
Okay.
So during your, your budget meeting, there was discussion about a single increase to attempt to cover the full contract, which is five years versus only increasing the, making the rate that you can cover your, your expenses. That is $370,000 or $370 a year. If you look at the long range, that does have the correct amount in it.
That does have the correct.
So it does show you what happens moving out the years and it would appear that going into 2028, you would have to do an increase again. Now, that's a really far out thing to project, but that's what it's looking like now.
And that's 370 after the $20 discount?
Before.
Before. It'd be 370 with a $20 discount if paid in full in the first quarter.
Okay. And then 390 if you don't take the discount, is that?
The opposite, 370 and a 350.
350 if you take the discount.
Now, that also includes increases in the recycling bins and all of the tag program. Because we did receive increases in our, our tipping fees, the tonnage of trash.
I appreciate that. I think it's the better way to go for residents.
I think that was the consensus on our budget discussion meeting as we work through it.
Good plan on trash.
Now, for the discussions, we can move to capital reserve. Actually, the rest of the funds, there have been no changes. I believe. So those are the same as what you had seen during your meeting on the 22nd. It is our hope that based on these minor changes that you have just reviewed, that you would be able to adopt the proposed budget, which allows the township then to advertise the budget for 20 days before adoption. And that adoption likely happened the first meeting in December. There certainly can be additional discussion at your next meeting, which is November 20th.
Any questions or comments on the board?
I have none at this point.
But that's, go ahead.
Okay, so the the tax millage would stay at 1.01, even though there is a, you know, we're having more budgetary challenges than we've had in the past, but that, okay. And then there was some discussion of possible millage increases in the future. Based on an extended budget.
Your, your millage would stay at 1.01 for 2025. The carryover funds in the general fund are, is what is allowing that to occur. That depletes or brings down the carryover cash to the point in 2026 that you would need to do something different. To what extent, we're not sure because of course you're projecting what the revenues will be in 25. And we always budget conservatively on revenues with the hopes and typically increase those revenues, so.
So there is a chance that it'll be a clearer picture and we could have a rosier forecast come next budget meeting. May, maybe not. There is that chance.
The next one in next year, you mean? It will rosier hopefully because of our conservative budgeting practices. Will it solve the full deficit? Probably not, but yet to be determined. But you will not have the sufficient carryover balance to move into 26.
Okay.
Yeah. So I just want to make the point that if there was a slight millage tax increase at this point in time, we would not be eating away at our reserve as much and possibly would have a less jump at some point in the future if we did need to do a millage tax increase. Yeah, I just want to make that clear and see if anybody wants to discuss that further.
I mean, I think the reserves are there for a reason, just like this. We have a lot of big capital items, center of the road project, fire truck. There's a lot of drivers to the extended forecast. I'm not prepared to raise taxes at this point. I'd rather wait and see what it is. And if we do have to raise taxes, I'd like to be very specific and I'd like to take a minimalist, minimalist point of view with it. So that would be where I'm at.
Scott?
My position has not changed.
Right. Roger?
I'd agree with Mr. Wiggles, Mr. Wiggles' approach.
I do, I do also. We have, we have the reserves. We've been fiscally sound and conservative in, from a revenue projection as well as an expense projection. We're going to be fine in 2025, but as, but again, as time goes on, we've identified the drivers being, those being personnel benefits, fire services and EMS services that are really going to challenge us in 2026 and beyond.
And I think there does need to be a discussion with the community moving forward just to prepare them for that and rather not have that discussion until we talk about it publicly about raising taxes.
Yes, and I agree with everything that was said, but my, it's my first budget and I just wanted to bring it up and as Mr. Wigglesworth just said, you know, just bringing it up does introduce it to the community that it may be required in the future. So yeah, I'm not disagreeing with any of that. I think that's wise counsel.
We appreciate your input. Okay, so with that, I guess we want a motion?
Yes.
Okay. I have a motion to adopt the proposed 2025 budget and allow advertising. And again, we're using reserves to offset some excess expenditures and shortages, but we should be fine. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Motion from Mr. Johnson, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Brew Baker. Motion from Mr. Johnson and a second from Mr. Brew Baker. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Nay.
Motion from Mr., okay. Motion passes four to one. All right, new business. We have any new business tonight?
You want, I forgot to put that in.
Yeah. Old business, did you want old business? Did you say new business?
New business.
Okay, did you skip old business?
I'm sorry. Okay. Yeah, the answer to that question is yes, I did.
Okay.
And no, we don't.
Okay, and we don't have any new, old business, so.
Correct.
Let's move on to new business.
That we do have.
We have some new business.
This afternoon, and actually for the last probably week, Chief Kotmeyer and I have been conversing about a potential burn ban due to the current drought and dryness conditions. It was discussed at the county level. The county fire chiefs were all in agreement that a burn ban was necessary. However, the county determined that they were not going to move forward with a countywide burn ban and suggested that it be handled at a municipal level. Chief Kotmeyer and I have been monitoring the fire weather warnings, the drought conditions, and many other sources of data. And today, Chief Kotmeyer determined that we are in need of a temporary municipal ban on open burning. It is within his purview as the chief fire official and within our burning ordinance, excuse me, to put a municipal burn ban in place for open burning. It is effective dated today, November 6, 2024. You have the memo provided to you by the manager. You can read it if you prefer or just simply state that, excuse me, both NOAA US Drought Monitor and the Department of Conservation of Natural Resources have indicated that Lancaster County, along with most of South Central Pennsylvania, is in a position where any open burning could create a significant impact, negative impact to public safety and the well-being of our residents as well as our emergency services. The burn ban is in effect for 30 days. It can be an extended and additional 30 days if necessary. And if conditions should improve, which we're not seeing any significant rain in the forecast, it could be lifted prior to the expiration on December 6th by the chief fire official, should that be determined.
Benefit of the public that are currently listening, the, this includes all types of open burning, including recreational and agricultural burning are prohibited. The use of propane, gas, and charcoal brickets, grills is not included in the burn ban so that we are aware.
So how do we make everybody aware of this? When the county puts out an alert, it gets in the paper, it gets well distributed, how do you get the word out at the municipal level when we're doing that on our own?
We have a L and P reporter on, on Zoom. I'm hoping that she will include that in her weekly recap. We will also put it on social media.
There are actually articles on all of the local news sources that have updated listings of burn bans. We can do it as a press release as well so that they all receive the information as we do for an emergency declaration.
Just saying, we have to get the word out somehow if we do this.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
Is this included like fire, recreational fire pits?
Anything with an open flame, I would think.
The, the, the hope is if we do this, it'll rain.
And when it rains, we can lift it right away too. If we have three days of rain, we're not going to keep a 30-day burn ban going at that point.
Chief Kotmeyer has that ability.
Correct, yeah.
Okay. Anything else for new business?
Yes.
Hearing none? Public comment? Any public comment this evening?
That one died now too. I did put fresh batteries, so the other one should be good. Sorry, Patty.
I just had a question related to advertising of the budget. Maybe this is for, more for Mrs. Schweitzer about how the residents, I, I mean, I'm assuming that means the residents can actually view the proposed budget and then how, is that something that it's just available like in the office that we would need to come in to see it in the office or could it be made available on the website for a period of time?
We do both.
Okay.
So it'll be in the newspaper, which is required, that the proposed budget is available for public viewing. And then we have a hard copy here and then we also put it on our website as a draft proposed.
Okay, thank you.
Check. Fred Knar, 109 in Clover Circle. I just wanted to thank you all for the use of the facility. We had a, a great election day yesterday. We had our, our Rs and Ds working together as we always do and it's really neat. It's a really great group that we have here. But one thing I want to mention is when we came in on Monday night, after 43 years of having Mr. Rick Miller set up, we were not allowed into this room. All our equipment was in here, all the ballots were in here, all the documentation was in here, everything was in this room, but we were barred by four people from coming into this room. And they told them, they told us that it had to be, they had to be here, they couldn't be anybody anywhere else, and they couldn't relocate anywhere else. And doing research, I see that they're a very valuable component in the community, but somehow making us all sit in the lobby for 45 minutes to an hour just seemed not the appropriate thing to do because we had work to do and we all had to be up at 4:30 the next morning. So that was the youth aid panel. I guess they were holding sessions in here with families and stuff. And again, online, it's a really great thing that they're doing, but to obstruct the entire judge, all the inspectors, all the clerks and just have us sit in the lobby for that time just didn't seem appropriate. So I just want to get that on record so that we don't have that happen again. I know it hasn't happened for Rick's 43 years, but it happened this Monday night, so hopefully it won't happen again, maybe for another 43 years.
So, so the youth panel was something new that they used this township building for the first Monday of the month and it was just overlooked.
Okay, so that won't happen scheduling wise?
No, in fact, they've already been reached out. The scheduling for the first, for the, the, when they set up has been moved by the youth panel and it will not have, happen again. It was an unfortunate set of circumstances.
Sorry about that, Mr. Knar.
Okay, I just thought I'd mention it because it, it hasn't happened before, so, but it was just, it just seemed that they, they could have relocated someplace, but I guess all the parents were coming in and, and I understand.
And it's a little bit of a sensitive thing that they do, so they can't just kind of go to the lobby.
Oh, I took pictures of all the families and all the kids. I posted, I'm just kidding, I'm just kidding. I, I was aware that it was a sensitive thing you could
And they didn't expect you coming either, so it was, it was a difficult situation.
And there was no access available to any other part of the building at that time.
Right, thank you.
Anything else, public comment? Anything from the Zoom? Seeing and hearing none, let's move on to the next items. Mrs. Schweitzer, manager's report.
So I'm, I'm told the Center of the Road is moving along smoothly. They just started their late season paving, so things are plugging away at that. The Old Royce Town Road Bridge, we're still struggling a little bit. We're trying for completion in a few weeks. The Farmingdale Road, I am waiting for the grant reimbursement. That should be arriving any day. I had the grant administrator check out, check in with me today to see if we received it, so I think that's being in process. The zoning hearing board meeting for the Colebrook validity challenge is now scheduled for December 19th. There will be no meeting in November. The Route 72 unlit at temporary signals. We had a meeting with B.R. Kreider to review the project since it is on their, they're partially on their property. We are moving forward with the bidding process, hopefully getting this bid in, in this late winter or early winter and then have a spring construction. The Hurpark Phase 2, if you didn't notice when you came in, the parking lot has started. The trees have been removed and some have been replanted. They are excavating for the parking lot. The Botchi core currently is at a standstill. They are waiting for completion of some lumber that was missing from the package so that they complete the, the roof area. The Noel Doorward Park, nothing much happening there. We are finalizing the design and we have a meeting scheduled, Blue Green Corridor, just to continue that coordination process. The contract for the trash and recycling bids has been signed and bonding has been received. We have a kickoff meeting, I believe, next Thursday just to talk to them. It is the same contractor, but we just want to start off on the right foot. We did talk about the Church and Road Park. I'm still waiting for changes from our attorney regarding the GSL contract, so that hasn't moved any further than what it was last time we met. We talked about the draft budget, the redevelopment authority. The Nissley Road Basin also has started. There's the art clearing and grubbing the area, so they are also removing trees. And there are quite a few questions from residents, what we're putting in. When they find out it's a basin, they are very happy that we're not building anything, so. That's all I have. We did have a park and rec group meeting on the 24th and, and of course, we discussed the H Y I, H Y A agreement with Jay Enoch. concludes the report unless there's questions.
Thank you, Mrs. Schweitzer. Any questions? Any questions from the audience? Any questions from Zoom? Okay. Any, anything else for the good of the cause? All right, hearing and seeing none, adjourn, adjourn the meeting at 8:46. Actually, it's 45.